Of the room. First order of business is to determine a quorum. And we have five commissioners present, and I understand Mr. Pratt's on his way, so we have a quorum. Next item, review of minutes. Adoption of the minutes from the October ninth planning commission meeting.
Motion to approve is submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Number three, zoning requests. A, RR number nine four four, property owner Jacqueline Alicia Durr applicant. Jacqueline Alicia Durr, location Clubhouse Circle St. George, requesting zoning change from R one, single family residential district to AR agricultural residential district. TMS number zero five nine dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero seven. Total acreage ninety-one point one nine. And who has that?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone the old country club golf course in St. George from R one to AR. And y'all may recall, some of y'all may recall, a few years back, this was rezoned from AR to R one for the purpose of developing an R one cluster subdivision. However, that plan was never realized. And so the applicant is now requesting to rezone the property back to agricultural residential in order to complete a minor subdivision and recombination of lots with some of the existing single-family lots that you can see here that surround this parcel. As those existing lots are already rezoned AR, the applicant was advised to rezone this property back to R one in order to prevent any dual-zoned properties, which can cause a lot of problems with permitting setbacks, all that jazz in the future. This will return the density back to one unit per acre and the minimum lot size back to an acre, which is a stark contrast to what can be allowed in an R one cluster, with the smallest minimum lot size in an R one cluster being six thousand square feet. This property is located within three distinct future land use designations. However, all of those could support the agricultural residential district. There are some wetlands on the property and some portions within the AE flood zone, though with the decrease in density, staff doesn't anticipate this to cause any future issues. The properties do fall within the water service area of the town of St. George and sewer service area of Dorchester County Water and Sewer, though at this time, no connections are proposed. Any future connections would require coordination with those entities, though the newly subdivided lots are anticipated to be on septic as allowed in minor subdivisions. With that, staff recommends approval of the request.
Was there any public comments?
No.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Did Kara come up?
Albert Judy, nineteen twenty-one Flatwood Road. Ms. Durr has asked me to speak on behalf of her. And if you've got any questions?
Commissioners have any questions?
No.
I remember this because we did the flip zoning in the other direction about three years ago.
Yes, sir. Oh, excuse me. And, you know, it seems like a best-case scenario to me because some of the existing owners out there are able to expand their acreage and it, you know, cleans things up.
Yeah.
I do have a quick question, not that you could really tell me to pound sand, but the, with some of the septic that's out there, I think we had learned from the last time that some of the septic actually goes beyond some of the people's property. Is that's kind of what you're also?
It is. It's easements for, you know, when they planted the first part of the country club, you know, I don't know when that was, early eighties. So it didn't really matter back then, you could do whatever. But as people built out there, they figured their rules changed or whatever, and there are septic easements on some of that property.
Of course, right.
Yep.
Can I just say, what my plan is now and is, and we're probably going to talk about it, but I feel like it's in the best interest of the homeowners. And so I haven't advertised the land. I took it off the market and have given the homeowners the opportunity to purchase behind them and any of the property that they wanted to keep to be a whole that they could practice on or whatever they want to do with. So I've pretty much gotten to the end of that. I think we may have two or three more that might want to purchase. But that gives them the opportunity to do something with that land if they want, and I offered it at a lower price to be able to help them out with that. And I think everybody's happy. I've gone in and done a lot of clear cutting, cleaned it up, and really improved the property.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
One question I've got in the future. Are some of these owners buying enough property that maybe another dwelling can be put on?
Yes. There, therein again, I think that's why staff recommended the rezoning. Some of the lots, people are buying like two acres or three acres kind of behind them. Most of them, so they could be divided again, just not as dense as R one.
Right.
They could choose who was behind them or next to them.
Family member.
I would make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning request.
I'll second.
Your motion and second and further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Again, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Next item, number four, vision applications and requests preliminary plan. Pine Ridge Estates, phase three, property owner NVR Inc., applicant Stantec, location Coming Chapel Road, zoning district AR agricultural residential, one hundred and twenty-five lots, acreage one hundred and ninety-two point seven one. TMS number one one eight dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero six seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We received this application for consideration of the third phase of the Pine Ridge Estates development. You may recall, phase one and phase two were approved for construction. They are currently under development, and we reviewed a couple of plats, sub-phases of plats within there. So there's a couple homes up and some improvements that have been approved. Phase one and two consisted of one hundred and forty-three single-family lots on approximately two hundred and fifty acres. This phase three will provide one hundred and twenty-five single-family lots on one hundred and ninety-two acres. The site here is located near Givens Ferry State Park, off of Coming Chapel Road and Indigo Road, about three miles south of the town of Ridgeville. Predominantly wooded vacant property, not used for anything previously. Property was given an exemption from the two thousand twenty-four ordinance amendments related to improvements in major subdivisions to sections twenty point four point one, twenty point five point one, twenty point six point two, twenty point ten, and twenty point twelve by county council, because at the time of adoption of those amendments, the developer was in the process of construction for phases one and two and very deep into design for phase three. These amendments required connection to public water and sewer, complete street requirements, including sidewalks along streets and street lighting in all major subdivisions regardless of zoning district. So this is an AR zoning. They superseded some of the R one zoning because at the time, our AR zoning had no requirements and there was nothing outside of zoning that would have required any of those improvements. So we've received permits from the developer to construct onsite wastewater systems for each lot as we had with phase one and phase two. They are doing engineered systems on each lot. Each lot will also be served by private well. Sidewalks and lights are not provided within development, which is consistent, again, with those, the exemption of those requirements that were in place at phase one and phase two. In connection with this request for approval, you'll note in your staff report that the applicant is also requesting a modification from the requirements of twenty point four point three, which is the street design standards. This is for the length of an uninterrupted street as well as section twenty point one point one E, which is for the excessive lot depth to width ratio. These modifications were approved for the previous phase one and phase two. The applicant has addressed the questions which are required for consideration of modification. That's attached to your staff report. This, again, is consistent with the previous approvals. The applicant is showing that there's a difficulty in designing the subdivision without these typical connections of a typical minor subdivision, or major subdivision in the other zoning, which would, you know, have more of a lot and block layout. Because of the requirements to achieve an acre, getting that lot width to depth ratio is also difficult. They pointed that out in their, in their application. The determination for a length of a street is determined by our ordinance, which categorizes roads as courts or drives. That's determined by the average daily trips. There's not a lot of development here, not a lot of homes. We determine average daily trips for a single-family home to be approximately ten trips per day. So we categorize this as a court, although it looks a whole lot more like a drive that you'd see in a more dense neighborhood. So regarding the exist of lot width to depth ratio, again, it's really a matter of their design of their development. Development here meets all the minimum lot requirements of the AR district outside of those requested modifications certified by the engineer of record. The AR zoning allows for proposed single-family detached homes by right with a maximum density of one principal dwelling per acre of land and a minimum lot size of one acre. Lot size width is required to be a hundred feet, which all of these meet. The request for modification will provide the ability for the developer to provide for a little less connectivity in longer streets, which will result in a less connected neighborhood. We would not prefer this style of development, however, given this is a rural large lot neighborhood and there are no amenities within it such as parks or anything to get to, there's really no purpose for having less connectivity in streets because there's no kids walking on sidewalks to a park or anything like that. So we went through in your staff report our following findings regarding the modification requests. We can go over those if you'd like and build for any questions as well. Traffic study was done on the whole development at the beginning, and those requirements, as noted in the staff report, are required to be finished, and we won't allow the final plat to come through until those are done, really just finishing off Indigo Road so that they do have a standard intersection there. This development also is going to have a way out to another entrance as opposed to this, the single access. So this is creating a backside emergency access and really daily access if anybody were to go west. As previously stated, ponds and wetlands are to be accommodated on lots owned by the homeowners association. Staff will require appropriate dedication and maintenance requirements on the final plat review accompanied by the requirements of Article twenty-three and twenty-four. With that, we're recommending approval of the preliminary plan with the requested modifications to section twenty point four point three and twenty-one, or twenty point one point one E, based on the exemptions previously provided by the county council.
Was there any public comment on this?
There is no public hearing advertised, so we haven't posted it. There's been no comment. There's no rezoning, so there's no entitlement.
Is the applicant here or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. Taylor Reeves with Stantec, four nine six nine Center Point Road. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners have any questions?
Yes, you're going to have septic tanks, engineered systems?
Yes.
And you're going to have wells?
Yes.
Okay, is this individual wells or one community well, or how's that work?
Individual private wells for each lot. The septic systems have already been submitted and approved through DEHAC for all of the lots, and the private wells, I believe they will be submitted once the individual lot, the building permits take place. But studies have been done for the wells for the entire community.
And you say there's going to be a back way out, because that's a lot of lots with one entrance. So is that rear entrance already in, or is it going to become a second phase or what?
Yes, so this is phase three. There's a secondary entrance, where they're circling on the screen. That'll be installed with phase three, and then the primary entrance to the neighborhood was completed with phase one and two.
Okay, so this will bring in the third, the back entrance?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the approximate cost for the engineered septic system? And the well for engineering?
Tim Legend with NVR, the developer builder. Each engineered septic with the dirt import is about thirty thousand dollars. An inch well is about eight, eight to nine thousand.
How deep are the wells going to be?
Three hundred and thirty feet.
Okay, so it'll be down into the San Tey limestone formation?
I'll have to confirm, but I believe that's correct, yeah, three hundred and thirty.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, but I guess mine are probably more related to Public Works. Anybody, Public Works? Okay. I guess, when was the, I guess the next question I've got is, when was the, when did this first phase come through again, like originally? I know it's pretty old, right?
I believe it had been twenty twenty-three.
Originally?
Middle of twenty twenty-three, I think, July, maybe.
All of the approvals?
Don't quote me on that, I don't know exactly the date. I can look up the exact date.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just, again, my questions are kind of, I mean, you know, sometimes it's, you know, how do I say this? I'm trying to think of, you know, sometimes we can, but, you know, just because we can doesn't necessarily mean we should sometimes. And I'm guessing and probably, I just have concerns with some of the, some construction and some of the pond and probably relates to, again, questions for Public Works, unfortunately. Do you have Public Works approval, I'm assuming?
Yes. DEHAC and Public Works. The stormwater was master planned for the entire development, and phase three is consistent with what was approved originally with phase one and two. Ponds are in place for one and two or in a functioning well and will continue for the future phase.
Good.
I don't think that, this wasn't a part of the special protection area or anything, so no additional requirements were required for the development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the original conceptual plan, phase one, phase two, phase three was always part of the original plan, or is this something new?
This was, it was part of the original kind of master plan. We separated out the phase more so on the septic permitting. I think we were required to have all of the septic permits prior to coming in front of y'all with the preliminary plat. So we actually separated phase three since we didn't have those at the time, but it was always master planned. And this is an extra land, I think, Mr. Pratt, if you're asking. This isn't added on to the original or anything. It was always contemplated as part of the.
Right, because this is kind of at the back of the, back of the subdivision. Okay.
I've got a question about the, that's because I don't know, I'm just asking, the lots along Indigo Lane, are they, are there any restrictions that they can not be able to access Indigo, or they have to access through the subdivision?
They will, I mean, we're not clearing the entire lot. We're actually only clearing a certain portion. So the back portion of the lots adjacent to Indigo Road will still be completely wooded. So can they access it if you take a four-wheeler? Sure. But the driveways will be towards the intersection or the actual internal street.
I do have another question. That connection is, sorry, that connection, is that, is that actually county, or is that, I mean, is that Eagle Drive, or is that actually Indigo where that road connection actually is? Are y'all dealing, I think one of them's DOT.
That's the DOT one, Chris, yeah.
So I just, is, are, is the connection DOT, or is it actually the?
DOT.
It is DOT?
I think Indigo itself was.
County road.
Yeah.
Okay. And y'all have got all your permits in place with the DOT as well, or are y'all still working through those?
We have those, yep.
Okay. Let's just, let's see, it seems like, I don't know, eight hundred feet or so going back towards Indigo. Is that, is there a roadside ditch along Eagle Creek, I guess? Four hundred and fifty feet, sorry.
I don't think so. I don't remember, I don't recall. I'd have to look back at it.
I was just curious, because I didn't see any drainage pipes or anything like that. I just noticed that all four hundred and fifty feet is heading back towards the DOT right-of-way. And they usually give us a hard time for that, but get your permit, if you get your permit, so.
Got one more question about the, I can't read it, I think it's HOA number sixteen, HOA number sixteen, open area, what is that?
That's just HOA area. That'll be undisturbed, open space, kind of like a buffer area.
So that kind of adds to my question, it's probably, you can't access it through that.
I don't think there will be a physical structure that would stop someone, but the intent is that the residents will utilize the interior road network for access.
Any comments from the public? Questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second. More in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Number five, street name requests, none. Number six, A, RR number nine four two, property owner Pearlie G Scheider, applicant Pearlie C Scheider, location six four one two, Badham Drive, Reevesville, requests zoning change from AR agricultural residential district to CL one, commercial light industrial district, TMS number zero four four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero four three, and a portion of zero four four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero four two, total acreage five point four eight.
Thank you. This was a request that was deferred last month at the request of the applicants in order to allow them a little bit more time to address some of the concerns that staff originally had, and they ultimately amended their application. Previously, only this particular property was up for rezoning. Now they have added a portion of TMS ending in oh four two, and that parcel actually crosses the road, so it actually includes this area, but they are proposing to subdivide this portion off so that they can have a lot more space in order to develop the property. The property is located over a mile north of the I ninety-five and Highway seventy-eight interchange at the corner of Badham and Simmons. Simmons is a county-maintained dead-end gravel road. The property itself has been the site of several legal non-conforming uses over the years, and the applicant is requesting to rezone for the purpose of developing, redeveloping the site for a mulch company with associated storage. The property is designated as natural riparian corridor by the future land use map, but as you can see, it's kind of this area of the riparian corridor that bisects the employment mixed-use area, and the natural riparian corridor does recommend that rezonings and development be considered on a case-by-case basis. The CLI district would allow many commercial and industrial uses, including warehousing, manufacturing uses, that can be supported in the employment mixed-use area directly adjacent to this property with its location between two municipalities and along a major right-of-way. The CLI district does list specific location requirements, stating that the district should only be mapped in accordance with the future land use map and should only be located in proximity to either existing CLI and industrial districts or where isolated from residential uses. Staff would like to note that there are, there is a residence in particular here on that adjacent property, but the property, especially with the addition of parcel oh four two, it has sufficient area, we believe, to provide for appropriate setbacks in buffering to increase the compatibility between those two uses. And again, given the employment mixed-use designation of this area, staff does anticipate to see this area growing more commercially with job-oriented uses in the future. As the property was developed prior to the adoption of the zoning and land development regulations, the existing site layout is legal non-conforming and does not meet the development standards. Should the property be rezoned, the applicant would have to come back in for site development plan review through the technical review committee for compliance with buffers, parking, stormwater, any other applicable, applicable requirements related to redevelopment of the site. While located in the water and sewer service area of DCWS, I don't believe there's any current sewer service to the site, so any new development would either be on the existing septic or would have to be on septic. There is water in the area and any connections would require coordination with DCWS. With that, staff recommends approval, though I would like to note that in the staff report, it is missing a condition. We would like to add the condition that the plat subdividing parcel oh four two be recorded by third reading.
Any public comment on this?
No, we do not.
Is the applicant here?
Wayne Scheider, son from Pearlie, thirty-five, sixty-four, Calhoun Creek Road, Bransville.
Commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Scheider. Is this close to the Ettestow electric facility out there?
Yes, yes. It's probably less than a quarter of a mile from there.
So you're just down Badham Road?
A little bit further down the road.
So you're pretty close to ninety-five?
Yeah, yeah. My, I think it's a mile and a half if I had to plug it. But the building was a lawnmower business for over thirty-five years, so.
Right.
It started in nineteen seventy-two.
I do have a question from staff. Because this is a legal non-conforming, any improvements, because it does follow within a flood zone, there's a floodway, it's not on the property, but it follows within that flood zone, any improvements would have to fall within the new, that new ordinance that we just passed, regarding the?
Yes, if there were development in the flood plain, particularly development that brought in fill, yes, they would need to comply with compensatory storage, though at this time, I don't believe the applicant is proposing to disturb that area.
Understood.
I, I have a couple of questions, actually, related to the fire ordinance, and they're related to life safety, quite frankly. Have you gotten the easements yet for, for the access, for the secondary access for fire or not?
Well, the Simmons Road would be the secondary, I would assume, but the major intersection was, was already there.
Are you referring to Branton Assemblage, Mr. Simulaski?
This is the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's all right. My mistake.
You jumped ahead one.
I just, that's what I'm here. Excuse me.
It's all right.
What are you planning to do with this site?
Well, right now, our plans are to do a mulch yard, to have, and it really won't be a whole lot because we can use bigger trucks, and the trucks have mostly come in and staged there, and they'll go out in the mornings and go to Orangeburg and pick up the mulch and go to Charleston, Columbia, wherever. There will be some there just to kind of top a load off for if we have a small, short run to make, but far as having a lot of mulch on this particular site, we don't foresee that. It's more of a place to, to bring the trucks and to do it. Actually, my son-in-law has the mulch company.
Okay.
And he's already, he's in Florida, and he wants to put a second location in Charleston.
Will he bring the mulch up to the area?
Well, the mulch is in Orangeburg and Wantauburrow, and you have different sites that actually do the mulching, dyeing and all that. We don't, we're not involved with any of that. We go to their site, load the mulch on the truck, go to the subdivisions or whatever, and blow it. So it's usually a blower truck mostly used.
This is just a staging area?
Staging mostly, yes, sir.
Okay.
There won't be any tailgate slamming?
No, 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 no. This tailgate doesn't, only these trucks don't even open unless there's a maintenance involved. or something, but, no.
Any further questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any public comment?
We would just like to make it that we have had the new plat survey to include the portion that she was mentioning.
Okay.
So we do have that new plat in hand.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve.
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is approved. Now I get back on track. Item B, preliminary plat, plan, Branton Assemblage, property owner, William S. Branton III, Victoria V. Singleton, Marion T. Farrell Jr. and Marion T. Farrell III, applicant ESP Associates, Inc., Parker Strobel. Location, Highway 17A, Somerville, zoning district R1, single-family residential, 93 lots, acreage 71.93, TMS number 143-00-00-046, 144-13-00-005, 152-000-00-172, and 152-01-01-028. Who has this one?
Thank you. This is a request for preliminary plan approval for a 93 lot subdivision under the R1 cluster option. This property is comprised of four existing parcels that extend from Highway 17A, north and west totaling about 72 acres with 21.6 approximately being wet. The applicant received cluster yield plan approval back in 2023 and utilized several bonus density options to achieve a total of 93 lots. Those options were providing an additional point of connection, including a trail system throughout the neighborhood and providing housing products that use fiber cement siding, brick, stone, stucco, or materials of equal quality as approved by the zoning administrator. The plans provide for 14.66 acres of open space, which is in excess of the amount required by the cluster yield plan. 2.96 acres of that open space is proposed to be activated with various recreational uses such as trails, pocket parks, amenity areas, et cetera. The development will be served with sewer by DCWS and served by water with DCWA. Roads are proposed to be dedicated to the public and handed over to the county for maintenance, which will have to be coordinated with Public Works at the time of final plat. As allowable in the R1 cluster option, the applicant is providing two different lot types, a table three lot, which is, has a 6,000 square foot minimum lot size, and a table four lot, which has an 8,000 minimum square foot lot size. In compliance with the bonus density options outlined in the cluster yield plan, the developer is providing a stubout currently at Palmer Road for potential future access, though for the purpose of this development, the stubout in connection to Palmer Road will be utilized for emergency access only. Any future development would have requirements for improvements to Palmer Road. The developer is also providing a trail system interconnected throughout the development to meet bonus density option two. Regarding bonus density option three, any materials for housing products will have to be reviewed at the time that building permits come in to ensure compliance with that bonus density option. To satisfy the open space requirements of the cluster ordinance, the developer has chosen various methods to activate open space, and the proposed amenities are provided to achieve the open space requirements and are, should therefore be included in review of this preliminary plan and required at the time of final plat. Staff would like to recommend that the amenity center, which is proposed to include a pool and a clubhouse with associated parking included in this plan, be considered conceptual and be required to receive site plan approval prior to the final plat. Additionally, given that it's difficult to obtain building permits for structures related to amenities prior to final plat, staff recommends that the applicant obtain a building permit for the amenity center prior to the issuance of any permits for the homes. This portion of 17A is also slated for improvements as part of the county's capital improvement program, and the applicant is showing their development roadside buffer beginning outside of that future right of way line as required by section 548. In addition, a traffic study was conducted with the requirement of an installation of a westbound right turn lane along 17A, which is included in these plans, and that must be substantially complete prior to final plat approval. As a part of this preliminary plan, the applicant is also requesting approval of a modification from the land development standards, table 20.4.3 for maximum cul-de-sac length. They submitted their application with responses to each criteria. Due to the unique shape of the property and presence of wetlands, staff finds that the criteria for modification have been met and therefore is recommending approval of that modification with this plan. As a part of development in accordance with the fire code, the developer is providing a stubout to connect at Palmer Road to provide secondary fire access as required for subdivisions greater than 50 lots. The applicant has provided an exhibit which was included in your packets indicating that they intend to improve Palmer Road. Several sections of this road are not located in right of way, but rather in an ingress/egress easement that runs through other properties. In order for the developer to make the required improvements and establish access to Palmer Road, they must obtain appropriate permissions from these property owners, which has not been completed as of the date of this report. So currently, the applicant does not have permission to improve Palmer Road across other people's property. Due to the lack of that appropriate permission regarding the improvements in fire access along Palmer Road, staff is recommending disapproval of this plan until the point at which those permissions are acquired or another solution is found to get that secondary access.
This is probably semantics, but is disapproval the right term?
Yes.
I would think it's, you can't approve it at this time because all submissions have not been made.
So, disapproval allows the applicant, so when an applicant has met the requirements, they can come to the planning commission at any time and request approval. Disapproval is the word that our ordinance uses when referring to subdivisions because it's not a denial. The planning commission cannot deny a plan that meets requirements, and so a disapproval allows for the applicant to go and make changes and come back to address the items that need to be addressed for future approval.
Like I said, it's probably semantics.
Yes.
So rather than approval with conditions, it would be disapproval and bring it back to us?
Staff is recommending disapproval as opposed to approval with conditions because approval with conditions would then give the developer the go-ahead to essentially begin certain things and, you know, spend money, and then in the event that they cannot get that access.
They've spent money.
Then things go awry.
Liability then comes back to the county.
So that is where our disapproval is coming from.
Did you have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Is the applicant here?
How's it going on, Parker Strobel, ESP? And for the purposes that you're saying, we are requesting a conditional approval with the intent that our, the easement agreement is being finalized before final plat.
Any questions from the commissioner? I guess where I come from on this, I would have no problem with the approval if you had the easement in your hand.
Sure.
Correct.
And that's where I'm coming from on this. Sure.
We've gone down this road before, and we've kind of gotten, as a planning commission, gotten slapped on the hand, so to speak. So, you know, if you would have the easement, again, I agree, I would be all for it.
Understood.
To protect the mission county, I think that.
We've gotten burned on this before.
Yeah, that's right. I think we just appreciate you coming out, but I don't.
We're both doing our jobs.
That's right.
Just curious, so you are working on that easement?
Yes, sir.
Have you had a discussion with the property owners?
We're actually exploring other options, not just on Palmer Road. We're also exploring options on the east side of the property, just because there'd be, you know, two property owners to get an easement from as opposed to several. So we're working on it.
Looking for another way to go, if possible. So Plan A, Plan B, B or C? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you looking at Hornet?
Yes, sir. The intent would be, we may shift a lot to make an access along Hornet.
Make a wider access to get, you know, get the turn of the radius in for a fire truck.
Yes, sir.
I'm good. I'd like to make a recommendation to disapprove until such time they come back with their easements for the fire access, secondary access.
Well, it's a, it's a, disapproval in accordance with your recommendation is.
Correct, recommendation.
Do we have a second?
We have a second right here. Josh.
Okay. Further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is just let the record reflect that the plan looks reasonably acceptable with this, is the reason the disapproval is because of inconclusive easement to second access. Just, you don't have to put that in the motion, I just want to make sure that's said.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one question, and this is more towards planning staff, just so we don't end up in the same trouble we ended up in the ponds. Have we defined what trails are versus sidewalks and things? Because we've gotten bit by that before, too.
So the trails are actually provided, there are exhibits in this plan. I believe most of them are mulch trails, and they do go through the open space, and they are not sidewalks.
Don't bring concrete out there.
They're either mulch or plantation mix.
Okay, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the sign aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Boxed. The ayes have it, the motion is approved. New business, A, modification from land development standards, modification from section 3.20.1.2B prohibiting two contiguous flag lots, property owner, Robert Mildred Connolly, life estate, applicant, Albert R. Judy, location, Maple Branch Road, Reevesville, TMS number 056-00-00-006.
Yeah, so this is a request by Mr. Judy to, for a modification from section 20.1.2B, which prohibits two flag lots from being contiguous. As you can see here in the proposed subdivision plat, these are considered flag lots because they do not meet the minimum lot width, and the bulk of the property is here to the rear of the lots. So those are considered two contiguous flag lots. With the bulk of the property of the original parcel, you can see here the frontage goes like this, and the bulk of the property is back here, and due to that limited frontage, that kind of limits the applicant's ability to meet the minimum lot width necessary for, or which necessitates the flag lots. All other development requirements can be met, including minimum lot size on these properties. As you can see, they're pretty large tracks. Article 22 of ordinance 0413 provides that whenever, in the opinion of the county planning commission, the strict application of the requirements contained in Articles 20 and 21 would result in extreme practical difficulties or undue misuse of property, the commission may modify such requirements as necessary so that the developer is allowed to develop his property in a reasonable manner, provided that public interests are protected and the general intent and spirit of these regulations are preserved. And then it lists several criteria, and the applicant has submitted an application that provides responses to all those criteria. And after reviewing that request, staff provides the following findings. The modification will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare of the county. The modification will not adversely affect the reasonable development of adjacent property. The modification may be considered justified as there are topographic or other special conditions, including the shape of the property, with a majority of the land bay being to the rear of the parcel with limited frontage. The justification does not necessarily generally apply to similar developments that meet the standards of which the modification is sought, as similarly sized properties in the vicinity may not have such limited frontage. The modification is consistent with the objectives of the ordinance and would not have the effect of nullifying the intent or purpose of the ordinance as it would allow for the subdivision of lots that meet all other required standards. Based on the findings presented, staff finds that the application meets the requirements for the modification, and therefore, staff recommends approval.
Any comment on this?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions?
Only question I have is just, it's going to remain single family, like, or?
Yeah, so basically, this is a state division, this is how Mr. Robert wanted to leave his property to his two sons. Well, if you look on the west side, Gary R. Connolly is the son that is going to get Track Three. Gary already owns five acres of the original property. Well, I suggested we abandon the lines and put all that together. Well, they've had it in a life estate long enough that they feel comfortable leaving it that way. And, well, you know, they're getting up in age. Matter of fact, Mr. Robert just passed a couple of days ago, but Ms. Mildred's still living, so whenever, she will eventually transfer this to two sons. It's not a for-profit subdivision, they're just trying to divide up the family land, and I was unaware of the flag lots whenever we were discussing all of this, and, you know, it's going to end up as two 11-acre tracks when all of a sudden.
Yeah, when I look at it, with the two 11-acre tracks, if it is two or three people in the family, combining those two flag lots as an access road, it's fine for development, then?
Yeah, well, see, so when Gary gets Track Three, he owns all that road frontage to the left, so it really isn't going to make a lot of difference in matters right now, maybe, but it doesn't matter in the future.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions? Or any kind of motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? I'm sorry, I jumped ahead again. Before the chairman, I have none.
Ms. Reinertson could not be here this evening, so she does not have a report.
And I have no report. And is there any public comment? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Let's do your stuff. One thing I think I have to do.
Hey, Emily, out of curiosity, is her?